All right, let's go ahead and get started at seven o'clock. It is, uh, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's start with roll call.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Council members Christensen, Finley, Martin, Peck, Rodriguez.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Mayor Bagley, we have a quorum.
All right, great. Let's go ahead and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we get going, um, I don't see, uh, first call public invited to be heard, but I'd remind anybody here that if you want to talk, get your name on the list. Uh, I'll, we'll still let you talk, but if you don't get on the list, you gotta wait till the end of the meeting to talk. So get on the list if you want to say something. Uh, do I have a motion for approval the minutes of April 10th, 2018?
Second.
All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously with, uh, Mayor Protam Christensen absent. All right, let's go on to agenda revisions and submission of documents and motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas. Councilmember Finley. No, no, you have to have something now. Now, I guess the only thing that, uh, I would ask is, I know that we're gonna be dealing with sweets security. Do we need to put that on agenda at some point? Are you just gonna deal with that?
Um, if something comes up that needs some, if there's an option, it would probably need council's authorization on that.
Okay.
I think we're still waiting on information from the lender.
Uh, I'm not talking about the, the, I'm talking about, oh, I see, because cash flow, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, all right. Okay, seeing nobody in the queue, let's go ahead. City manager, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor, Council.
All right, we have some, uh, special reports and presentations. First of all, let's go ahead. Uh, we have a proclamation designating the month of May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado. Can we have those present to receive the proclamation? Come on down. Bad idea. So you come on up, I'm gonna read the proclamation, then you can say some really cool things, and then you can have your picture taken with the city council. Thus, thus go the proclamations. All right, this is a proclamation designating the month of May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, one in five Americans will experience a mental health issue in any given year, and one in 10 young people will experience a period of major depression. And whereas, the impact of mental illness reaches everyone in our community, family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas, there is a need for increased awareness of and access to mental health resources and crisis services in Longmont. And whereas, supporting action for mental health is a growing movement of community members, faith leaders, local governments, nonprofits, and businesses, working to bring educational resources and awareness to, awareness to Longmont. And whereas, there are a number of events planned in May, including special presentations on mental health, community conversations, and mental health first aid trainings. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council, the city of Longmont, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to use this month to raise awareness and increase understanding about health, mental health in the Longmont community. So thank you for coming tonight. Do you have something to say? Go ahead and push that button, pretty please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Uh, my name's Julie Phillips. I'm the project coordinator for supporting action for mental health. And I wanted to just share really briefly about what we do have happening for Mental Health Awareness Month, and just share about the exciting work that's happened in the last year. And we had a chance to, to come here last year in preparation for Mental Health Awareness Month. And in the past year, our 40-plus committee members, um, that are involved and work across Longmont have been very busy. And I'm really pleased to share that in the last year, we've had 1,100 people trained in mental health first aid across the community. A hundred of those are city of Longmont employees, which I thought you might be interested to know. We've had the chance to train 21 instructors from our community to teach mental health first aid and youth mental health first aid, including seven of those that are bilingual. We have conducted an anti-stigma campaign called Let's Talk, in partnership with the county and with other counties across the, the front range. I'm encouraging community members to reach out, to talk about mental health, and to make it okay to talk about it. Because that's how we reach out, that's how people who need help will feel comfortable reaching out for the help they need, is if we talk about it more and make it okay to talk about it. And we've encouraged conversation by creating conversation guides that anybody can take and do with a small group. And we've created those in English and Spanish, again, so that we really can reach the community. Um, we have looked at the crisis resources in the community and created a document called Levels of Care, so that people can know what is out there and what resources are available to them and at what level of crisis. We have engaged more than 1,000 community members in these educational efforts separate from mental health first aid. So we have 1,100 through mental health first aid and another thousand through presentations and educational events. We have done work in raising awareness about suicide and doing events around suicide. We have done an event around reducing stigma. Um, and we've been working with the county as they look at mental health as their priority, to be advocates for how Longmont is considered and how we can voice the needs of our Longmont community as that is addressed at a county-wide level. And in the next month, we are excited to have a special event on May 7th, where we're gonna look at the important role that pets actually play in mental health, and the role that the human animal connection can play in a person's mental wellness and in their recovery from mental health challenges. We have 10 mental health first aid classes scheduled just in the month of May. We have a goal to train 900 more people in the next five months. And so one of the challenges that we have for the whole community is to get out and take the class. And we're gonna be challenging the 1,100 that have taken the class to tell others. And to share that training opportunity. Because all the things we're doing right now are at no cost to the Longmont community, to Longmont community members. And we really want folks to take advantage of this. Um, and then we're gonna be encouraging more conversations and creating more resources to, um, to facilitate to those conversations, including new well-being bags at the library with books and, and movies and documentaries on, uh, different topics related to mental health. So those are some of the things that we're doing. And I invite you to also get involved and, and, and to join us in, in what we're doing. So, um, so thank you so much for just a couple of minutes to share about what's happening and what we're excited to see happen in the month ahead.
No, thank you. And just a quick question, how long, how big of a group do you need to teach, to teach the mental health first aid?
So a full class is 30 people.
Okay.
And we can set up trainings for groups smaller than that, or we work with groups if they want to bring some folks to a training, and then we can fill the rest of the seats.
Cause I'm, I'm wondering if we'd wanna, I'm wondering, I'm, the thought came to mind that maybe city councils should participate.
That would be fantastic.
So, I mean.
That would be great.
Yes, hold on one second, yep. Mayor Protam Christensen just asked, are you implying that we're mentally ill? You said it, Mayor Protam, no, just kidding.
So, mental health first aid is so that we can reach out and help people who are experiencing a mental health crisis. So, it is something we can all, people have joked about that, but I think it's important that we know this is something we all, we can all do, because it's how we can all reach out and help others, so.
I take depression meds, have for nine years, so. All right, Valerie Skit, did you have something that you need to say? All right. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, I want to say that I have taken mental health first aid. I found it not only useful information, but actually, uh, a transformative experience. You learn a lot of self-knowledge while you're learning how to help other people. And so I am accepting your challenge and telling a lot of people right this minute that it's an important thing to do and you won't be sorry you did it.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Could we get the, uh, the dates of those mental health first aid classes on to our website? Would that be something we could do, Sandy? Is it on there?
They are. We actually post them on the calendar. We've been using the city's calendar as the place to post them.
Well, everybody look at the calendar, sign up.
Dr. Waters.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Based on Councilwoman Martin's experience and recommendation, I am registered for the big class. There's one coming up.
All right.
You might just wanna register for that one. If it's already on the calendar, I think Julie, you helped me get registered since, uh, I think, yeah, so it's coming up.
Tuesday, May 1st at 8:00.
In the morning?
It's an eight-hour training, 8:00.
All right, I, I, that's good. All right, Mayor Protam.
Despite my sarcasm, um, I, we, uh, the mayor and, uh, the chief of police and I were here, uh, a few days ago, and a group of junior high kids came because they were very disturbed about the, um, gun violence in schools and worried about it, of course. And, um, one of the messages that we tried to give, especially, uh, the mayor and the police chief, were if you see somebody who seems very unhappy, sits by themselves all the time, just talk to them. You know, try to draw them into your friends, and don't just leave them there because you don't know what to do. Just be a friend to them. And, um, so I, it's very useful for all of us in the community. Everybody struggles with, uh, problems at some point in their life. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Councilmember, you are popular. Proclamations are never this popular, Julie. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Uh, just a question, if we do have some, uh, bilingual Spanish language trainings as well?
Yes, so we have classes in English and Spanish. We actually have five coming up in Spanish in the next six weeks, something like that, yeah.
All right, well, come on up. It's that special time.
And we have a couple other people from our group.
Oh, no, invite everybody up.
Perfect, so Masia Leon and Doug Ward.
Come on, Council. I don't take pictures by myself.
I was worried. All right, um, let's go ahead. We have another proclamation. I don't know if the LDDA or the Gears folks are here. Come on down. I see your cool, I see cool t-shirts. One cool t-shirt. All right, this pro, this is a proclamation designated, designating April 28th, 2018 as Gears Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, or the LDDA, dedicated April 28th as Gears Day to honor the many enthusiastic Gears volunteers who have actively supported the downtown community. And whereas, Gears young professionals lead by example, making downtown Longmont an engaging and vibrant place to be. Their tireless and positive support is a true example of volunteerism at its best. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council, the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2018 as Gears Day in Longmont, and I invite all to consider participating in the Gears Volunteer Program. So, sir, if you take them on, tell us what Gears is about and make it look good.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Bagley and, uh, Council, uh, for this awesome honor. Uh, my name's Andrew. Uh, I founded Gears back in 2011. Uh, shortly after, I came actually to this council meeting and introduced ourselves, and, and that's how the LDDA got in contact with us. Um, we basically said that we'd like to volunteer in the community, and we did so across many city council, uh, meetings across Boulder County. Um, we are just a, a group of young individuals, uh, ranging from 21 to 40 years old, that get together a couple times a month to talk about what our community needs, or what we'd like to provide our community, and then we go out and do it. Uh, we're all member-driven, so we do the type of volunteer work that our members feel is important. Uh, so it really gives a sense of passion. Uh, you're not volunteering for anything that you don't support. Um, we've been a very strong, uh, partner of LDDAs for, since then, uh, six years now. And, uh, we're very, very happy to be a part of the Longmont community. Um, it's very, it's something special here, and, uh, just to be a small part of it is very important to us, so. Um, it's a, a very, very big honor for us. Uh, we're a very young organization, and, uh, this goes a long way to recognize what we've done, the small impact. It, it feels good to be appreciated, so thank you very much, guys.
No, thank you. Do we need to give up eight hours on a Tuesday?
You do not.
Hey, no, just kidding. Come on up, let's take that picture.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Uh, Council. All right, yeah, that's, I see her smiling. You nervous? All right, come on up. Silver Creek Leadership Academy student presentation on the Green Initiative. No notes, no nothing. She's gonna rock it.
No, she's not a presentation.
Oh, no, I know, that's what I mean, no notes.
While we're getting that loaded, I just wanna take a minute. It's my honor to introduce you all. Um, I think all of you were here when you came the first time, but maybe there's some new members. So Kimber Lee Fung, she's the incredible Silver Creek Leadership Academy student that's been working with our office over the last school year on her project called The Green Initiative. It's on there on, on the desktop already. Uh, it's been such an honor and such a pleasure to work with Kimber Lee. She's an incredible young person, and it really gives me hope for the future to have such brilliant, passionate young people who are really taking up the mantle of sustainability. So I'm excited for you all to hear about the work she's doing and the legacy that she's leaving behind for other students to follow, so.
All right, Ms. Fung.
Thank you. Kinda short. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm, again, Kimber Lee Fung, and I'm here to present to you my project, The Green Initiative. Uh, The Green Initiative is a compost campaign in the Longmont area that hopes to bring awareness and education about composting. Um, it's in partnership with the 2016 Sustainability Bill, as well as the SCLA Leadership Academy. Before I begin, I'd like to mention my mentors, as well as talk about the Silver Creek Leadership Academy. Um, one of my mentors is Lisa Knoblock. Uh, she is the Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Longmont. Uh, Dara Ward could not be here tonight, but she is the St. Rain Valley School District Energy and Sustainability Manager. And I'm also here today with, uh, my parents, Kat Fung and Kendall Fung. And the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, I could not be here without Ms. Carrie Adams, as well as Ms. Lauren Kohn. Uh, the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, real quick, is a four-year leadership program for high school students, where we learn about presentation skills, like where I am right now, uh, networking, as well as leading up to their senior year. Where we will be talking about our passions and what we want to do in the future. So for the goal piece of the project, I really want to do something about public policy. Something I'm really looking forward to in the future is going into politics. I have been able to read about the 2016 Sustainability Plan. Um, this, the sections that I was focused on was the WA 3, which reads, "Increase Public Education and Awareness About Waste Reduction and Diversion Opportunities", and WA 4, which reads, "Provide Waste Diversion Opportunities and Education for the St. Rain Valley School District." Uh, another piece that I want to bring is the Resolution R 2008-98. And the resolution states, the city of Longmont, uh, Longmont City Council declaring Longmont a zero-waste community and encouraging the pursuit of zero waste. The areas in which I have been working on this past year include schools, residents, and local businesses. For the school piece of this fall, I have been working to get environmental clubs in, in our schools. I've been working with Altona Middle School, My All Matter, and, uh, Silver Creek Leaders, uh, Silver Creek High School, excuse me. Um, environmental clubs and any club really help increase student involvement and awareness around the school community. Last week was Earth Week at Creek, where students dressed in certain colors to show support for different issues, such as water pollution, we all wore blue, and green, we wore in favor of environmental conservation. Uh, last week, we also had a green-up cleanup, where students and teachers were able to go around campus and pick up trash, and a lot of people really enjoyed that. This spring, I'm also bringing compost tumblers to schools that do not have the Green Star School Program. The Green Star School Program is a compost, uh, initiative where schools learn about composting. And currently, they are only working with, uh, middle schools, and many of the high schools in the area do not have it yet. So bringing the compost tumblers gives students an opportunity to learn about the science and understand what composting is. Uh, when the compost is finished, these compost tumblers will create, uh, finished compost in which the students can use on campus or bring home. And I would not have been able to purchase these compost bins without the Longmont Community Foundation's support, Sunflower Bank, and Ozo Coffee. Another piece is to increase resident, um, awareness about the curbside composting and small trash cans. Um, having both the small trash cans and curbside composting kind of lessens, uh, the amount of waste, as well as gets people involved in composting. The city of Longmont currently serves 29 households in Longmont. And in fall of 2017, when I began the project, there were about 3,800 people who currently had the composting. And through many events, like last week's Earth Day event with the Resilient and Sustainable Longmont, I was able to help increase the subscription to 3,942 this spring. Local businesses, it's really important to get them involved as well. I worked with Pace Partners for Clean Environment. They are a group out of Boulder County that give free consultation and free service to businesses who are interested in being more sustainable. Uh, they help out with water conservation, water diversion, as well as transportation. I actually worked with, uh, Matt Hannan and Zach Swank on this project. Uh, Matt, one day, we went to, uh, Red Frog Coffee, and he brought this giant bag of water faucets. And I had no idea what it was for until we started going around and changing all the water faucets in Red Frog Coffee. And so we changed all the sizes, it didn't, and changed the water pressure. And so now Red Frog Coffee will able, be able to have water conservation and cut costs on their water bill. Uh, was able to visit with about six businesses.
You should just go in and do it.
And this fall of 2018, I will be going to CU Boulder to study public policy and chemical engineering. I want, although CU is 20 minutes away, I do want to come back to Longmont and see it thriving and being sustainable and still here. I want to see blue skies and green grass. So my, here are my thoughts for the future in ways the city can help support. I would hope to see multifamily homes with composting. I was able to reach out to a lot of these people who live in the apartments and condos, and they're really interested in being involved in sustainability, but they don't have a convenient way to do so. I also hope to have homes and businesses to have incentives to be more sustainable. And, uh, my mentor, Miss Lisa, will be also introducing a business piece, uh, much like the Pace Partners. And lastly, I could not be here without the support of all the people around me. So I'm asking the city council to please support young students looking to make change in the community. One thing that I really learned about this project and about all the projects that my friends at the Silver Creek Leadership Academy had, is that there are people out there who really want to hear from us, who are, who want to help us and really want to support us. And some students don't get that, so I really ask the council to please support students who are looking to make positive change within the city. I could not be here today without the city of Longmont, and I really hope to see it here still thriving and sustainable, because I will be taking it over someday, and so, so many students right now will, will be the next generation to take this over. So I would really like to see it here. Thank you again, Council, for having me tonight, and thank you so much for everyone here.
We, we are on notice. Thank you. All right, next we have, uh, Jessica Erickson, the Executive Director of the Longmont Executive, Longmont Economic Development Partnership, who is here to give her quarterly update.
That's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. Thank you for your time this evening, um, giving me the opportunity to provide the first quarter 2018 report to city council from the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. A reminder, as always, that the Longmont Economic Development Partnership focuses our work in four core service areas of advanced Longmont, advanced local business, advanced primary industry, and advancing our startup community. I'll start talking about the work that we've done in the first quarter relative to the Advanced Longmont Strategy. Um, and again, to remind everyone here that the Advanced Longmont Strategy really provides us with a vision for economic development for our community, our targeted industries, and the Advanced Longmont Partners Group that's actively, collaboratively pursuing initiatives in support of the Advanced Longmont Strategy. Throughout the Advanced Longmont Strategy, we have goals and objectives relative to, um, six areas. Education and workforce development, real estate and infrastructure, quality of life, business climate, entrepreneurship and innovation, and marketing. Last time I was here, I, uh, let you all know that the Advanced Longmont Partners had been working on updating the goals and strategies in the Advanced Longmont, um, the Advanced Longmont Strategy, which was originally adopted in 2013. So about five years out, thought it time to recalibrate and work together, uh, to update those goals and strategies. And so I'll just quickly go through, uh, what those updated goals and strategies are in each of those sections of the, the plan. Uh, relative to marketing, our goal is that Longmont be recognized locally, regionally, nationally, and globally as a premier business location, with strategies to improve our efforts relative to internal and external marketing. Internal, internal marketing being, taking, taking opportunities to inform our local community about the Advanced Longmont Strategy, the progress of it, and the work that's being done in collaboration with all of our Advanced Longmont Partners. And then external marketing being our efforts to tell Longmont's story regionally, nationally, and globally for the purpose of attracting economic development and business investment. Our business climate goal is that Longmont has a welcoming and accommodating business climate for a diverse set of industries. Um, this includes evaluating and benchmarking, uh, permitting procedures, development review process, supporting small business development, creating an environment of inclusivity and diversity, uh, within Longmont, and continuing to expand upon collaborations with the Advanced Longmont Partner Organizations. Education and workforce development goal is to be home to a diverse and talented workforce, including both post-secondary and workforce-ready ma- including both post-secondary and workforce-ready manufacturing workers and young professionals. That goal really came from our partners at the St. Rain Valley School District and wanting to ensure that there is an understanding in the strategy that workforce development, especially when it comes to K through twelve education, doesn't necessarily mean preparation for a four-year university, but could also mean preparation for an immediate post-high school career. And so the strategies relative to that, that they've encouraged us to pursue and will be supporting the pursuit of, actually, leading the pursuit of, have to do with aligning education with industry needs, both at the K through twelve and post-secondary level, as well as connecting students here locally with internships, apprenticeships, mentoring, and leadership opportunities in our community. Our goal relative to entrepreneurship and innovation is to be an ideal home for startups at all stages of development and recognized as the National Center for Entrepreneurship. We'll do this by increasing local awareness of innovation assets, ensuring that our local entrepreneurs know of the resources that are available for them to be successful here, as well as increasing our regional, national, and global external awareness of innovation assets to encourage more entrepreneurs to come to our community, as well as to attract investment for the entrepreneurs and startups that are already here. We also want to continue to strengthen our entrepreneurial ecosystem through expansion of resource organizations and facilities like coworking spaces, incubators, maker spaces, and other types of entrepreneurial resource organizations. Education and workforce development is important. I have it on there twice. Quality of life goal is Longmont has a highly attractive quality of life and diverse community with a thriving arts, culinary, and entertainment culture appealing to a diverse workforce. Strategies there include supporting and marketing our arts, culinary, and entertainment communities, both as amenity for our existing residents, as well as an attraction destination for visitors. Also, to maintain and enhance the character of established neighborhoods throughout the community. That goal actually aligns directly with a goal in the Envision Longmont Plan. Also, to invest in public recreation and arts facilities throughout the community, as well as social amenities that help retain and attract a diverse workforce. So now I'll get into the actual work of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership during the first quarter. And I've taken your suggestions that we try to put some of this reporting in more context so you can understand the bigger picture of the why we do the things that we do and the goals and metrics that we're trying to achieve. I will say with this presentation, I have made progress towards that. We are definitely not all the way there, but hope to continue having conversations with you on how we can continue to improve that. So in the first quarter, as far as the milestones, so these are really activities that we've engaged specifically in to pursue the goals and strategies of the Advanced Longmont Plan. And so what I've done here that we haven't done in the past is make sure that there's a tie between those milestones and the specific goal that they're related to in the Advanced Longmont Plan. So the first two bullet points are the hosting of our Advanced Longmont Economic Development Summit event and Cornerstone Awards, where we presented Project of the Year and Job Creator of the Year and other business awards, as well as the annual Tom Brock Award at our Cornerstone luncheon that was held during the Economic Development Summit. We really consider those to be contributing to achieving to our marketing goals, primarily our internal marketing goals. That was an opportunity for us to communicate to people locally, as well as people who came in from other parts of the region about the Advanced Longmont Strategy, economic development in Longmont, and the accomplishments and achievements of businesses that have either established or grown here in the past year. We also, as an organization, this year launched a Latino Business Advisory Committee. This is relative to the business climate goal of encouraging inclusiveness in a diverse community, both community as a whole, as well as business and entrepreneurial communities here in Longmont. And so we're really looking to that group to help advise us on how we do a better job of that, not just as a Longmont EDP, but as all the Advanced Longmont Partners and as part of the Advanced Longmont Plan. We traveled to Las Vegas for the International Economic Development Council Leadership Summit to represent Longmont there. Again, another part of our marketing objective is to get out to the rest of the country and the world to tell Longmont's story, and we had some opportunity to do that there. We also received nomination and have since received approval, both from the state and federal level, to designate two Longmont Census Trax for Opportunity Zone designation. And this will really contribute to our real estate and infrastructure goals in the Advanced Longmont Plan. I have another slide, a couple more slides that go into more detail about that later in my presentation. One of the resources that the Longmont Economic Development Partnership has brought to the community in twenty-six, effective in two thousand and sixteen, the establishment of the North Metro Enterprise Zone. So wanted to talk about some of the metrics surrounding that. So so far this year, we've had one hundred and eighty-nine businesses pre-certified to utilize those tax credits based on their location in the enterprise zone. Our goal here is really because it just established in two thousand and sixteen to encourage increased usage and benefit from the Enterprise Zone Program. And so you'll see the first year that we had businesses pre-certifying, in two thousand and sixteen, we had one hundred and seventy-five businesses pre-certifying. Two hundred and seven, or two thousand and seventeen, we had two hundred and twenty-nine. And so far this year, one hundred and eighty-nine, which puts us on track to far exceed the two hundred and twenty-nine that pre-certified last year. And so we've seen year-over-year increases in use and benefit from that program. So last year, going to the bottom of the slide, was the first year that businesses could actually certify for and take advantage of those tax credits that they earned by pre-certifying their location in the enterprise zone. So in two thousand and seventeen, as I think I've reported before, thirty-six businesses actually certified and utilized those tax credits totaling six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in total tax credits. And that equated to twenty-nine million dollars of capital invested by those businesses, two hundred and forty-two net new jobs created within the enterprise zone area, one hundred and forty-five employees receiving training, and four million dollars invested in R and D. So far, or actually through first quarter, so we didn't even get to April fifteenth tax deadline, much less any of the extensions, that we'll continue to see certifications and extensions through the end of this year. But so far, we've had twenty-three businesses year-to-date certify totaling two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in tax credits, equating to five million dollars in capital investment, two hundred and fourteen jobs created, and two and a half million dollars invested in R and D. If last year is any indication, based on this time last year, we expect to see this year claims of tax credits be significantly higher than two thousand and seventeen, once the year is out. But we'll continue reporting on that as we go through the year. As I mentioned in our Advanced Longmont Milestones slide, we have confirmed Opportunity Zone designation by the federal government of two census tracts. I know it's tough to see there. I'm happy to send you, and I also think it's in the report that you were sent, a map of what those Opportunity Zone designation areas encompass. The Opportunity Zone Program is a federal program that was enacted by the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of two thousand and seventeen that provides a tax incentive for investors to reinvest capital gains into communities to address a number of challenges. These challenges include promoting economic vitality in parts of the state that may have lagged behind in recent years, funding of development of workforce and affordable housing in areas with escalating prices and inventory shortages, which definitely applies to Longmont, funding of new infrastructure to support population and economic growth, investing in startup businesses that have potential for rapid increases in scale and ability to export goods and services outside of Colorado, and upgrading the capability of underutilized assets through capital improvement investments. You'll see that a significant portion of the River Corridor, as well as the Sugar Mill site, almost, well, I think the entirety of our downtown district are all included within that Opportunity Zone designation area. So the way the Opportunity Zone works, and actually, nobody knows totally how it's going to work yet. We're still figuring out the rules, and we expect that we'll understand that a little bit better over the next couple of months. There's a June deadline that says that all those rules have to be figured out by June. We're looking forward to that. But the basics of it are, is that investors will have an opportunity to invest in a new investment vehicle called an opportunity fund and take incentives on their capital gains for investing in community projects, infrastructure projects, affordable housing projects, entrepreneurial and startup business investments. So those capital gains incentives are, so basically, the capital gains on any money taken out of existing investments and put into opportunity funds equate to no upfront tax bill on the rolled-over capital gains. So if you take money out of something that it's just sitting in right now and put it into an opportunity fund, there's no capital gains assessed on the funds that are rolled over. And then there's a reduction on the rolled-over capital gain investment for long-term holdings. So benefits for keeping your funds in an opportunity fund for five years, seven years, and then ultimately forgiveness of all capital gains after ten years, both on the money going into the fund, as well as the money coming out of the fund. So that's a significant incentive for investors from, not just local investors, but across the country, to look at Longmont, to put investments into infrastructure, housing, and advancing our economic development strategy. So overall, as of the end of Q one, there are fifty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-two jobs, total jobs, in Longmont area. This is across all sectors. This represents two point three percent year-over-year job growth, which is comparable to and just ahead of what Boulder County and the U.S. as a whole saw and just behind total job growth in Colorado. So we're projecting for this year, two thousand and eighteen, so this time next year, when I stand in front of you, that we'll see two percent job growth, in line, again, with Boulder County in the U.S. and just shy of what Colorado is projecting. And so that graph there shows for you year-over-year job growth, starting in two thousand and fourteen. And so we've seen since, so five-year job growth plus the projected job growth into two thousand and nineteen. And so that's the metric by which we'll measure. If all things stay the same economically, there are no significant global or national or local disasters or issues or occurrences that impact the economy significantly, we expect that at this time next year, we'll be standing in front of you talking about another two percent job growth across all industry sectors in Longmont. Then when we look at that from our targeted industry perspective, again, those industry sectors of advanced technology, bioscience, creative arts and culinary, professional services and I T, and then the total of all industries aligns with total job growth over all sectors, about two point three percent year-over-year from last year. But then we look at each of those targeted industries and their unique components and different market forces that are impacting those specific industries currently and have different projections for each of those industries in terms of job growth. So looking at where we're at today, from two thousand and eighteen to, or in two thousand and eighteen, in the creative arts and culinary sector, which has been our fastest-growing sector for a number of years, and we project it to continue to be so, over the next year, we project two point six percent growth in that sector. And then looking out to two thousand and twenty, so over the next couple of years, an additional six point six percent job growth. And when you look at professional services and I T, which is that second from the top blue line, another significant area of job growth for us in recent years, and nothing to indicate that we won't continue to see positive job growth within that industry sector. So projecting about one and a half percent, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, and then going out a couple of years, three point nine percent total job growth over the next couple of years. Advanced technology, we're projecting over the next three years, about a half percent job growth per year based on the economic data that we have currently. Again, all of these things can change with the win of a significant project or other market forces beyond our control. But all things staying the same as they are right now in the economy and not having any significant multi-hundreds or thousands of job-creating projects in the pipeline right now, these are what our projections are, and they can alter as some of those things might happen throughout the course of the year. And that may be the case with our bioscience industry sector. We're projecting basically flat job growth over the next couple of years within the bioscience sector. This will change significantly, however, if and when, excuse me, over the next couple of years, AstraZeneca shifts their focus from growth at their Boulder facility to activating the Longmont facility. That could potentially ultimately create a hundred percent job growth in the bioscience sector. We're not projecting that right now because we don't know the details of that, but we do know that that could be coming, and we will project based on that when we have better information about that. So our current prospect pipeline, we have forty-one active projects in our pipeline. Twenty-four of those are business attraction prospects, companies that don't currently have a location here looking to either relocate into or expand into Longmont. The other seventeen being expansions of our existing industry base. And of those forty-one, you can see that, and maybe you can't see that, so, sorry, I have to do the math. So about fourteen of those have come in new in Q one of twenty seventeen, or two thousand and eighteen, it's two thousand and eighteen now. And so one thing that I want to point out with this is that the difference in that, so we could be working on, with an individual prospect for multiple months, or in some cases, multiple years. When I was putting together this report today, we still have active prospects that we've been working with since two thousand and fifteen. And so we look at total active projects, total active prospects in our pipeline, and then also to ensure that we're monitoring continued new activity, we're also looking at the number of new projects or prospects that we have that start on a monthly or quarterly basis as we report it to you. And one of the reasons for this is that we want to make sure that we report both numbers for you is that when we have forty-one active prospects in our primary industry pipeline, the amount of time that we're spending out actively pursuing more prospects is less than if we had half that number in our pipeline. We would be spending less time on what we already have on our pipeline and more time pursuing additional prospects for that pipeline. And so on the, I guess it's the right side of the screen, for two thousand and eighteen so far, the actual Longmont EDP impacts. So these are jobs created that we can say were directly impacted by the work of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. We can't say secondarily who's visited our website or experienced some of our marketing campaigns and has been influenced to make decisions about Longmont. So the numbers, the actual numbers of our influence are probably even more significant than this, but I like to stick with just the facts that I know. And so these are numbers based on prospects that we've actively worked with that have announced projects in Longmont. So so far this year, Q one of two thousand and eighteen, four businesses have announced thirty-seven jobs, and these are new businesses coming into our community. And we also have sixty jobs pending announcement. These are projects that we know are landing in Longmont, but because, for a variety of reasons, aren't ready to announce that publicly yet. And then based on those forty-one active projects that we have in our pipeline, there's a potential for another eight hundred and ninety-three jobs, should we win all of those. And I'll go into that in just a second. And so we're currently sitting at a three point one percent unemployment rate in Longmont. I looked back, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, to really put that in perspective of kind of the body of work of the organization relative to prospect development. From two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, we've worked with a total of a hundred and seven different primary industry prospects, and that's since two thousand and fifteen, which is when I started and the organization really kind of changed our model and how we were pursuing and working with prospects. So forty-one of those, as I've already noted, were still active. We've won forty-three of those hundred and seven prospects that we've worked with and lost only twenty-three. So we have a forty-three percent win rate, which if you look at I E D C numbers relative to kind of industry average for that, and there's a bunch of different resources that will tell you that that average is anywhere from fifteen to twenty-three percent. I credit the fact that we have a higher-than-average win rate to the strategic way that we pursue economic development projects. We don't see every prospect that comes to Longmont or every business that's considering Longmont as equal, but really focus on the Advanced Longmont Strategy and the targeted industries and put our resources towards those projects as strategically as possible to ensure that we get not only wins for Longmont, but the highest and best wins for Longmont that benefit, have the highest benefit for the community. I think one example of that, one of the things that we're assessing right now, and we'll be able to bring you more formally in a future meeting, is our use of incentives. That's always a topic of conversation when we talk about economic development. So of a hundred and seven primary industry prospects, we have sought incentives, which means we've actively worked with the Finance Department and the Building Department to do estimates for what potential incentives could be. So of a hundred and seven prospects, we've asked for that twelve times. And of the forty-three that we've won, we've actually had eight incentives approved. So about twenty percent of the time when we're winning a project, there are incentives involved so far since two thousand and fifteen. Now, at the end of the day, of the projects that we've worked on and won represent over a million square feet of absorbed, built, or currently under construction commercial office and industrial space, and over fifteen hundred jobs created or announced to date since early two thousand and fifteen. All right, moving on to our real estate database, not much has changed here. We've seen about fifteen thousand additional square feet, close to sixteen thousand additional square feet absorbed so far. So we have about eight hundred, or... So we have about 800, or I'm sorry, just over 8 million square feet of total primary industry space in Longmont with 860,000 or so available currently. Keeping in mind that 460,000 of that is represented by the former Max Store Seagate facility. So we're showing just below a 10% vacancy rate in all of our primary industry space, but if we take that one facility out of it, we're less than 5% vacancy on what's remaining. So we're actively working with some developers on building some new space, but what's happening is it's filling before it gets built. So even as we have those coming online, it's not really addressing kind of a forward-looking issue of needing to have additional, specifically industrial manufacturing space for potential new companies that could be coming to our community. Relative to our local business, we've met with 20 local businesses, and that's I and my staff have had 20 different meetings with local businesses. These are businesses in our retail service, restaurant, and creative arts sectors, those businesses that are serving the local community. We have provided three of those groups with 1,000, or those companies with $1,000 Charlotte Group Destination Boot Camp scholarships. Those are scholarships for John Chalage Destination Boot Camp that helps locally-serving businesses become destination businesses, which is of benefit not just to the business, but also to Longmont and becoming a destination. We've awarded just over $5,500 in retail conversion grants. That's in partnership with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, so their grant availability is, I believe it's three times what ours is, so the total impact of the retail conversion grant is significantly higher than what we're providing to it. And then $27,000 in our targeted industries grants have been awarded so far this year. We do track, and this is where I said we're still making progress on reporting this information out to you, we do track not just the dollars given out, but then also what the return on that is in terms of private investment and job creation. And we'll have that in a, it's kind of been an internal report, and so not good for public consumption currently, but we're working on that, and that will be included in future reports to you. So you can see the true impact of the dollars that you're granting out to businesses on an annual basis. And then lastly, I'll talk about our work in the startup community, which is almost 100% focused right now on the development of Longmont Startup Week, which is for the community, by the community effort. And so you'll see all of these logos up here represent organizations that are either financially or in-kind supporting Longmont Startup Week this year. We've raised $22,500 in cash so far, and I would venture to guess that the in-kind is five to maybe 10 times that in total value. In addition to the organizations that you see up here, all of the advanced Longmont partner organizations are actively involved in the planning, as well as some new partners from across the region. Techstars, who has normally been a partner in name only, has been actively involved in our planning committee, as have some of the other regional entrepreneurial resource organizations. And so just a couple of updates, and we are, we do have a smart cities theme this year, but defining for Longmont what a smart city means, what does it mean for Longmont to be a smart city? And that goes beyond devices and data and IoT into the people, the education, the capital, as it says here, creators, commerce, capital, and community that really contribute to making a city smart. So some new things that we're doing this year is we're working with a web development group called GUI, who's actually actively working with St. Brain Innovation Center students to develop an app for LSW. So they're also, in addition to working with the students, are also mentoring and coaching the students to improve their coding skills. We've confirmed four of our keynote speakers, one of them, Morgan Smith, Marsha, I think you blogged about last year, he's coming back, we're very excited about that. Cosolv will again be Basecamp powered by Nextlight. We have a volunteer signup link available. The first night, we'll have an entire block party in partnership with the Downtown Development Authority in and around the 350 Terry Building. We've confirmed more than 30 venues across the community, as well as a really unique to Startup Weeks Anywhere in the Globe partnership with organizations that include Imagine Sample Supports and the Department of Labor Division of Vocational Rehab to engage their students and clients and volunteer activities and other activities through Startup Week as part of our theme of being smarter together and inclusive of all. And then we've secured technology to support bilingual programming throughout Longmont Startup Week 2018. So anybody who attends any of our events will have access to be able to hear that in Spanish or in English, depending on the language it's being delivered in. And then we also have ASL interpretation services confirmed for all of our keynote events, the ultimate goal of being a fully multilingual, bilingual, if not multilingual event someday. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'm a little confused about the distinction between targets and goals or projections and goals. It looks like what you've reported are mostly projections, whereas when you made the original projections, did you set goals for altering the projections? Did you, did you have, you know, the stretch goals for your activity actually changing the projection?
We did not. Currently, we are not, because the projections are candidly what the market can bear in terms of capacity, both in terms of labor force and real estate availability. So 2% job growth is maximizing that, if we achieve 2% job growth. I can say I have a goal of 4% job growth, but there are not, there's not enough labor force in the community. So if we achieve those projections, A, we're doing well, and B, we're probably maxing capacity that we currently have. Again, there are things that could change within the market, new facilities that come online, we're pursuing some opportunities to do some talent attraction and development, but I can't say that those things are definitive or what the end result of those things will be enough to say that they're going to impact economic projections for what job growth will be in the community.
So would we fall short of the projections if it were not for the activity of your organization?
Would we fall short of the projections?
Of the projections, yeah. I mean, if there's not an upside, is there a downside to your lack of activity? I'm trying to assess your impact, in other words.
Sure, I think so. And, you know, that's probably a question that I don't necessarily know the answer to for the current economic climate. I can tell you that if not for the work of our organization and some of the connections with resources that we're making with our existing industry and retention, which is a really hard number to project and report, that we would be losing jobs and we would have companies that would be leaving our community if not for the work that we're doing with them to connect them with the resources that we need. But that's a really hard projection and metric to measure. How do you measure retention? I can say that because I worked with a company, I mean, our retention goal is always 100%. We want to retain all of the jobs and all of the businesses that we currently have in the community. That's not a reality, and so, but to project anything less than that is for me to stand up here and say that it's my goal to achieve anything less than that. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it kind of does, but it doesn't tell us much about where to focus support for your organization, and it doesn't tell you very much about where to focus your activity. So I don't know, I can't design you a metric on the spot, but I'd sure like to see more of one.
It does actually tell us a lot about where to focus our resources and our activity. A lot of our resources and activity now are really focused on how are we supporting the creation of a climate here that is conducive to our existing industry base wanting to stay here and grow here. When I have businesses that have been here for 25 and 30 years telling me that they're sending all of their job growth to another state because they don't have access to a labor force here or to the real estate to be able to expand and grow in the way that they need here, that's my 100% focus, is how do we create a climate here that allows them to stay here and continue to grow here? Because ultimately, if they're going to continue to send jobs out of their job growth out of the state, there's going to be appeal to them to just ultimately move out of the state. And those companies, our existing industry employers, are telling me that the work that we're doing to attract new job creation to the community is negatively impacting their ability to stay here and grow here. And so we have absolutely shifted our focus to that retention piece and to the creating of an environment here that encourages the retention of our existing industry base. And if we grow jobs at 0% and retain 100% of our existing base here, I would be perfectly happy with that and satisfied to tell you that that's where I spend most of my time and my resources.
Well, that sounds like you need to be surfacing requirements on the city if you have that, if you have that situation where existing established businesses are threatened by business development that you engage in, then other organizations within the city need to know about that situation and be able to mitigate it so that we're not threatening the established business.
And those are conversations that I'm having with Harold and Sean on an almost daily basis, as well as our other partner organizations that are part of the partners' group. So those are ongoing conversations, and if there's something that I can report to you that makes you feel more comfortable or at ease with that, then I'm happy to do that.
Do you want to just explain briefly what you do every couple of weeks with our established primary employers, with the city manager and?
Sure. One of the programs that we offer through the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, and this was actually founded in, we actually started actively implementing it in 2015 after I started with the organization, it's called our City Leadership Program. On an annual basis, the leadership of my organization, which is myself and the chairman of my Board of Directors, the city manager's office, Harold and Sean, and the mayor, meet with every single one of our businesses on an annual basis that employs 100 or more people in our community. We also meet with all of the businesses newly located in the community the year before. And then there's an ongoing schedule of kind of relationship maintenance. In addition to the kind of ad hoc and as-needed conversations that we're having with our businesses, once a company has landed in the community, we've had that initial city leadership meeting with them. If they employ 100 or more people locally, they stay on a city leadership schedule, they're also included in our Elevate Longmont Survey Schedule, and I, according to my contract with you, also personally have to, well, not have to, I would anyway, but am contractually obligated to you to sit down with 50 different primary employers outside of those other programs on an annual basis.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Jessica, talking about retention, in this first quarter, have we lost any primary employers?
We, the one primary employer that we're aware of that we've lost is Broadcom. They were acquired by a company called Brocade, who is, who owns a facility in Broomfield, and were leasing space here in Longmont, so, and they had space at their owned facility in Broomfield, and so naturally, as part of the acquisition, relocated the Broadcom employees to the Brocade facility, again, that they own there.
How about employers that were not primary?
Employers that were not primary?
Businesses, I'm sorry, not employers, businesses. Have we lost many of those in this first quarter?
I don't know if many, but, and I don't know the number to that, I would say certainly. So when you look at local businesses, entrepreneurial businesses, the tracking of that is really difficult. So of 3,000 businesses that we have in the community, 27 or 2,800 of those are locally-serving businesses, and those can be anywhere from sole proprietors working out of their home to mom-and-pop retail shops, startups, any of the above. And so to track those, so really what we can track is jobs within that sector and see that the, whether or not jobs are going up and down, but it's really hard unless it's a company that we're actively working with to know whether. And there's no requirement that if you close up shop in town that you discontinue or end your sales tax license. So there's really no mechanism that tracks that, and unfortunately, establishment data is not available at a local level. So we can get establishment data at a county level and maybe do some extrapolating based on percentages, but I don't know how accurate that would be. So we really watch jobs, and our local sector in terms of jobs has done really well over the last few years. It's actually growing faster than any other sector of our economy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Waters.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. The, so I have a number of questions, and I'll try not to spend too much time on this and we can follow up. The, for, the, would be for me, and I'm, there's a lot I don't know, like what the Longmont, advanced Longmont strategy is. So could you just off the top of your head enlighten me, what is the Longmont, advancing Longmont strategy? Because there's reference to it in the report, and you referenced it several times tonight.
Yeah. So the advanced Longmont strategy is the comprehensive collaborative economic development strategy that we talk about, that's really intended to take a more holistic approach to economic development than what you would typically see. I think in most people's minds, economic development is about the headlines of big businesses relocating, coming from other parts of the country and creating a lot of jobs. And certainly, that's a piece of it, but the way to make that happen, to attract that kind of job growth and investment into a community, is to really look at economic development from the perspective of creating a place that is conducive to that type of investment. So that's creating a place that has a business climate for industries and businesses that make sense to work here, that has an infrastructure to serve those types of businesses and industries, that has access to a labor force that will serve those kind, those industries that we're targeting. And part of that access to a labor force is having a quality of life, a social climate here that is conducive to attracting new talent into the area. And then ultimately, oh, I'm sorry, and then also, most importantly probably, is encouraging innovation and entrepreneurial development. Starting and growing our own is the most effective way to ensure that we remain resistant and resilient in times of economic downturn across the rest of the country. And that's truly the Colorado story, and I think is becoming the Longmont story as well. And then, once that place is created, and that's what we're doing in partnership with all of these advanced Longmont partners, including yourselves and city council, when you have a place created, telling that story outside of Longmont and outside of the region and selling Longmont as a place for job creation and business investment becomes a lot easier and a lot more effective. And I think that's what you're seeing in the percentage of wins that we have with projects and prospects that we're pursuing. It's really easy to sell a place that has the social amenities and the, and the quality of life that we have here, that has the St. Brain Valley School District, that's not only contributing to that quality of life, but also developing a talent pipeline for tomorrow, that has innovation and entrepreneurial resources that are growing on a daily basis, that has broadband gigabit network. So all of the groundwork to create that place here is what we ultimately end up going and selling. And the easier that we make that by creating the place, the more effectively we can do that to ultimately get to those headlines of companies relocating hundreds of jobs and new facilities here.
Okay, so I heard about infrastructure, technology, ecosystem, well, labor force. I mean, those may all be components of a strategy, or those might, may all have a strategy. So at some point, it'd be helpful to know, is there a strategy? Is there a strategy in each of those areas? Because, because you just described the entire plan, I think, or approach. So if there's more than one strategy, that's fine, or maybe I just need to get a copy of the strategic plan, and I'll, and I'll learn that way. I just saw multiple references.
Okay. Sean actually was asking if he could help field that question.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Waters, we do have the advanced Longmont strategy, both on our website as well as that. I'll be glad to get you a copy.
Shame on me that I haven't.
No, it's fine. It's shame on us for not having sent that to all incoming council members. We developed that strategy in 2014. It was the first time that all of our economic partners had ever come together as one collective group, worked with a consulting firm to create a strategy for economic development. And so what Jessica referenced in terms of some of those goals are just updates. So every year, in fact, every month, really, we get together and we update all of those goals and strategies in that plan.
All right. So it would be helpful, the report we got, that we received to read prior to tonight has some of the components of what you presented tonight, and there's some differences.
Yeah.
Right? So you had a cleaner statement of goals tonight than what we received. Because one of my questions for you is, what does this mean? Identify and execute on tactics to engage a broader range of constituents in the implementation of the advanced Longmont strategy, through both financial support of the strategy and active involvement in the activities of the partnership. I understand the meaning of each word in that one sentence, but to label that as a goal for me is troubling, because that's not a goal statement. I can turn it into a goal statement. I can, I can turn it into something like, increase the number of constituent participants from A to B, if we knew what A was, and what the B, the target is, and their financial support from X to Y, if we knew what their baseline is and what we wanted to see, through involvement in the following activities. activities, bing, 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 bing. That, in my mind, but it's hard to, but that's, that goal statement doesn't show up in the presentation tonight. So some consistency or getting in advance what we could read, so it is the same content that we get presented in a, in a council meeting, would be helpful, right? At least it would to me. You made reference to ROI, and I think we spend $300,000 plus on economic, in the Economic Development Partnership. So since 2015, a million six or so, since 2015, a million two or three, depending on, I don't know exactly what the numbers are. What would be the anticipated return on investment? And where are the areas where you would expect the biggest returns? You don't have to answer that now if you, if you're uncomfortable with it, but I'd like to know that, right? If, if hanging on to businesses gets us our biggest return, then what percentage of what we're spending in taxpayers' dollars to do that? And how do we calculate what those returns are? Just in the interest of accountability here, right? And as we think about budgeting and setting priorities for next year, encouraging the relocation and expansion of retention, encourage the relocation, comma, expansion, comma, and retention of primary businesses and jobs in Longmont through targeted marketing and outreach efforts is a goal. And I'm just curious, and this is just my ignorance, do we know what the numbers are? I think we do of primary businesses, right?
229.
And then, in terms of expansion, what does encourage expansion mean in the context of this goal? And how would you measure that?
So, we, so when we track prospects, both that we're actively working with, as well as won and lost, we're tracking both from an attraction perspective, as well as an existing industry. And so existing industry would be expansion projects, well, actually either retention or expansion projects. So these are either companies that have come to us and said, we need you to work with us to help us find a reason to stay, or companies that say, you know, we're looking at expanding, we don't know if we're going to do that here in Longmont, or somewhere else where we currently have facilities, or maybe don't have facilities, and putting that investment elsewhere. So when we talk about existing industry prospects, that's what we're talking about. And so we track both jobs created. And so, so far, you'll see, we have 37 jobs announced by new primary industry businesses. So we haven't had any of our existing industry prospects announced so far this year. So we don't have a number to report so far this year. But if you look back at past quarters, we're typically announcing jobs announced by new pri, new businesses coming to the community, as well as jobs announced by existing industry expansions in the community. So we do report on both of those metrics.
All right. And I want to say, not, not everything worth doing can be measured. And not everything we can measure is worth doing. I mean, I want to just acknowledge that upfront. But if we're, if we're making goal statements, we ought to be able to evaluate whether or not we're accomplishing them, like this. To improve Longmont Economic Development Partnership's understanding of the local business sector in Longmont period, develop, test, and implement programming that delivers value to all businesses within the sector of the Longmont's economy, of Longmont's economy. Those are, I think, two goal statements under one heading. So are there ways to evaluate that from your perspective? Are there baseline data against which we can evaluate progress, so that we know that we're adding value? Kind of back to Councilwoman Martin's question.
Yep. And so the reason that the goal related to local business in particular is to kind of assess, evaluate, figure out where we fit in in terms of how we can support those businesses above and beyond the grant funds that we manage for, for the city, is because prior to 2015, the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, well, actually, it was at the time the Longmont Area Economic Council, had a 100% focus on primary industry and primary industry development, didn't work with, support, identify resources for, to support our local business sector, which in my mind is not a common sense approach to economic development. But the reality is, is that that's pretty much how most economic development organizations operate, particularly within the state and the front range. So that had been my experience with other economic development organizations as well. And so I, it's not my preference to come into a community and dictate to them what they need. And so we have been working with our local businesses. We formed the Local Business Advisory Committee last year to help inform us of where there might be resource gaps or resources that we could bring to the table, or that, or to the community, or that our partners could bring to the community to support local businesses. And so I would say there's been some progress made on, on that. In fact, the, the Shop Local Program that the DDA, the Chamber of Commerce, and our organization participated in together, that was more successful than it had been in past years, was a result of input and feedback from that Local Business Advisory Committee as to what would be of value to them in a program such as that, rather than us dictating to them, this is the program that we're going to give you. Longmont Restaurant Week, which so far has been wildly successful, and the Chamber of Commerce has done an excellent job with, and we've partnered with them on, came from a conversation that was started with that Local Business Advisory Committee. So yes, we're starting to see some, some, some results from the work that we're doing with the local businesses. But a lot of it has been, we've spent 40 years as an organization building relationships with our primary industry base to get to where we are today with that sector of our economy. And so we're a couple years in now to trying to foster the same thing with our, our local businesses. And so I think we'll start to have more meaningful results from that. But we're relatively short term into, into those conversations. And we've tried, we've tried and failed at some things, and we've started and stopped on some things because they weren't working out or going the direction of actually being supportive of our local business community. And we'll keep doing that as long as they'll continue to work with us and give us the opportunity to do so.
Well, trial, you're going to get smarter every time you fail, right?
Yes, absolutely.
There's no, there's no shame in that. And you ought to keep, keep testing, and failing quickly, and learning fast, and then getting better as you go along.
Absolutely.
When I just see words like, develop, test, implement, program, and delivers value, I wonder, now, how is she going to evaluate value? Is that, you're going to, you're going to survey employers, or, you know, what's the, what is the metric? Because that would be worth evaluating if you can. Could you give us an example of the kind of incentives? You mentioned there were eight of the 20, eight of the 43, I think, that, that required or enjoyed an incentive as part of the recruitment effort? Just some idea of what those are?
Can I go back on your previous question? One of the evaluation pieces is, we, we had the grants in place, and we adjusted the grant because we were finding folks weren't using it. And they had the conversation, which grant was that?
The, our Business Improvement Grant.
Right.
The non-DDA Business Improvement Grant.
And so part of it is also evaluating utilization of the programs that we have. And if they're not being utilized, then we go why? And then once we understand the why, then that's when we start working together to figure out what makes sense.
Yeah.
And then we would bring that back to you. I wanted to give a little bit of history too, to this, what she didn't say that occurred before Jessica got here, is what we found was, A, focused primarily on the outside, and there wasn't focus on any particular area. So the analogy I used is that it was really more of a shotgun approach. We were going after anything and everything, whether or not it was suited to our community. And really, the intent of the Advanced Longmont Plan was to focus on what works well for Longmont, what fits the infrastructure that we have, and what fits the labor force. And that's how you get the four focus areas that came out of that. So that, that's a little bit of history in, in that world. I wanted to, to kind of give you that background.
Like creator, those, those four?
Those four categories, biosciences.
Oh, the four categories.
Four categories. Because, you know, and, and to kind of touch on a question over here, what are the issues that we're dealing with today? And I think you've heard us talk about those. One, high bay manufacturing space is something that we know, and a lot of that comes out of our conversations with the businesses. And we know when we tend to lose in that category, we lose in that category because they need that space now, and they don't have time for it to be built. And so the, the fact of not having it available is an issue that we're dealing with as a community.
And what I spend a lot of my time and resource currently, so kind of a shift from pursuing prospects for, to bring new job creation, not that that's not a focus, that will always be a focus, but in terms of where I spend my time and what I'm trying to attract to the community, really working with a lot of developers from across the country to figure out how we can get some of them to take a risk and do some speculative development here in Longmont. And, you know, as a result, hopefully, we can retain some of the businesses that are outgrowing their existing space and don't have that type of space to grow into. In fact, you're going to be approving, hopefully, you're going to be asked to approve an incentive here later for one of those businesses that we've been working with for over two years, and nearly lost on a couple of occasions because we didn't have the type of space available for them. Fortunately, we were able to hold on to them and work with them and get them into, with the help of the city and you all, into space to keep them in Longmont. But a company that's been in Longmont, established in Longmont for 25 years, and again, that's why I say, and I get a little bit emotional when I talk about it, that's heartbreaking for somebody in my role, to lose a business, not because you don't have the right environment, or the right labor force, or the right business climate for them to want to stay and grow here, but because you don't have the right real estate. That's absolutely heartbreaking. And so that really shifts your focus on how do we ensure that this doesn't happen?
You know, unrelated to this report, but related to, we get on a regular basis in our information packet, information about development, residential and commercial, and, you know, I've, I haven't asked these questions because we just had other things to do, and I'll shut up in just a minute. But having heard in the last presentation, the dearth of commercial space, it piqued my interest when I, we've looked at the reports from planning on development. And it would, and I've seen some interesting numbers year over year in that report, in terms of numbers of permits, you know, increase, I'm trying to remember the, the numbers of permits and numbers of dollars or, you know, value of the space. It'd be helpful to have some additional information when we get that report. Is there anything we should be thinking about doing to help incentivize or encourage the other, the development of commercial space that would show up in that report that would support the kind of economic development we want to do?
And we're definitely having those conversations, and I'm having those conversations with the development community. There are a couple of market things that are happening that are outside of our control that are starting to shift in our favor. Up until recently, in the city of Longmont, you could not, for industrial space, demand the rents to pencil a project or to bank a project. So you couldn't build a project and get the rents that you needed to be able to pay for it as a developer, much less profit from it. That's starting to shift as our vacancy rate has gone down, as has the vacancy rates of surrounding communities, and that the type of space that we have has become more in demand, especially as we see a flood of companies coming out of, getting priced out of, or growing out of Boulder. And so we're starting to see that shift. And so we do have a couple of high bay industrial projects that are or will be coming out of the ground. But the reality is, is those are filled before they start construction. And so we need to get, we need to do something to get out ahead of it. And the one thing that I've heard over and over again, and this comes as a surprise to no one, and is not intended to disparage anyone, but the one single thing that could be done to incentivize developers to want to do any kind of speculative or any kind of industrial development in the community is figure out a way to reduce the time from when they acquire the property to when they get a building permit, to when they can deliver the building.
That's leading the process.
The most significant cost for them is the carrying cost to get from acquisition to construction and C.O.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then on, on that note, just to tie in, that is where, when we're going through the process that we talked about related to affordable housing, that same process is more broad in the sense that it'll deal with this, and we're having conversations to get the information in to go, okay, what, what are the pinch points that we're not seeing so that we can bring that back to council as necessary?
And so we're, I mean, that's another good point. So one of the number one things, as Brian pointed out, we have these city leadership meetings, we have the surveys that we have on, do on an annual basis. I am on a daily basis communicating with our primary employers. We actually recently just did a survey, which I'll be happy to share the results with you, of our primary industry employers, wondering or asking the questions of what is the impact that, or do you see a workforce housing crisis in our community? And what impact is that having on your ability to retain the workforce that you need? And it's absolutely having an impact. It's having, it's part of the conversation with every primary employer that we talk to. So again, a place where we're shifting our focus to how do we help inform and address that conversation so that we're not spiting our primary, our existing primary industry base to pursue, and I shouldn't say spiting, but not at least taking into consideration the impacts that these decisions are having on our primary industry base before decisions are, are made. So again, that retention piece has a lot to do with having the conversations about helping to inform conversations around creating that climate or maintaining that climate here in Longmont that wants, has them wanting to continue to stay here and grow here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Obviously, a theme of this presentation and the conversation so far has been labor force bandwidth, if you will. And as such, I was just wondering, the four sectors identified in the report, are any of them disproportionately affected more than others? Or is it a general across the board labor force bandwidth issue?
So what we've heard is that the primary issue is on the low end, in terms of wage scale, on the low end and in the middle, where we have companies like in biosciences and advanced technology that are paying, you know, six-figure average wages, they're not having a problem because they're not necessarily recruiting locally. So they're bringing talent in from other places, and other places that are still less affordable than, than Longmont, and even the Boulder County area with a different quality of life and less appeal. So not really experiencing it as much, unless there's an industry shortage in a certain specialization, but not impacted by local labor force climate. But the one challenge that we're hearing at the low end of the wage paying scale is people's ability to both live here and work here. And once they can't live here, in a lot of cases, don't have transportation to get here. So that's another big part of the conversation, is regional transportation connectivity as a tool for retaining the primary industry base that we have, and being part of those conversations and actively involved with Audrey and the 36 Community Solutions on how we can help address that, or at least kind of coalesce our, our current primary industry base around a solution for that, to help influence that. And then in that middle is really where the labor shortage, the true labor shortage is.
So it sounds like to me that you would suggest that prioritization be based around workforce housing and transportation connectivity, as far as being able to build that bandwidth up?
Yes, for that, yeah, for that middle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Martin. Actually, let's go with Councilmember Finley, because she hasn't had a chance yet, and then we'll come back to you.
Who knew this was going to be the big, the big controversy tonight? I, I just wanted to say thank you for all this information. It's great. You're doing an awesome job, and we're lucky to have you, and I'm glad you're here. The Advanced Longmont Plan, I have told folks across the nation at National League of Cities about it, they've downloaded it to try to, to replicate it because that partnership is so very important to what you do, and, and it's, it's innovative, and, and it's working well. So thank you for your hard work.
It's definitely unique.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'd like to come back to the idea of projections as, do you have projections of capacity? And before I let you answer, I want to kind of frame what I'm trying to say. You've got here an unemployment rate of 3.1%, which is pretty much beyond the definition of full employment. We have essentially no housing inventory. And so do you have a projection based on units under construction, stuff like that? Do you have a projection of Longmont's capacity to accept new businesses? Because it seems like that's going to have to affect your strategy about how you conduct business development?
Yes. I mean, I can provide you with all of that data. That all goes into the modeling. So real estate capacity in terms of commercial industrial, real estate capacity, capacity for future development of that type of space, as well as housing and housing that is under construction, and the amount of land available for construction, all goes into that modeling.
And we have a fairly short timeline based on the city as a whole's models to some mythical idea of build out, right? How does that affect your, your activities and your projections?
So, part of why we don't project that far out. I mean, it's really, it's really a hard thing to do. I mean, data, I mean, data can tell you any story that you want it to. We try to make it as it to. We try to make it as accurate and informative as possible for current conditions without trying to pretend like we have a crystal ball to understand what future conditions, even beyond two and three years out, are going to be. So there are a lot of different factors. I mean, we could have 2008 again, some kind of bubble burst and we're back in a situation. So for me to say, three years out, you know, assuming that that's not going to happen, this is what the capacity is. So we can only go based on the facts that we have in front of us today and the data that we have in front of us today. I mean, we could use that same modeling to project out 10 years based on build out. But again, that would be assuming that all other conditions stay the same and that we achieve that build out in the timeline that's currently proposed for us to achieve that.
All right. Just briefly, I just want to say thank you. I have the opportunity to see you probably more than the others because
We're neighbors.
We're neighbors. But just, I remember when, when I first joined council, when it was the Longmont Area Economic Council and there was different leadership here. And over a couple of years, we decided to, you know, hire someone like Jessica to come in and not only do what the Longmont Area Economic Council was doing, but also take over much of the function of the Business Development Center here with the city. And she's done a phenomenal job. So thank you. I remember, I mean, for example, before she came, I remember we were bleeding off. I mean, Digital Globe, you know, left, Butterball left, Amgen left, Seagate gave up some jobs. And since she's come, you know, AstraZeneca, Smuckers, she's been able to get the Economic Development Zone designated with the state that will provide economic incentives and opportunities for our city. And so the, I've heard a lot of questions about goals and metrics and the, which I'm all in favor for. This is a race that's a little confusing though, because everybody wants to go, oh, well, what, how fast is GDP increasing? Or how fast does your car go right now, given our 3.1% unemployment, lack of workforce housing and the other, the lack of real estate? It's more like your job is to hold 20 miles an hour in a school zone and hit no children, you know? And so it's, 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 I mean, so I see what you're doing and I think you're doing great.
Thank you.
So thank you for your report today. We've got one more. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So what I got out of this whole thing and the question that was asked is, what can we do to help you was housing and transportation at this point and perhaps incentives, whether it's through zoning and codes or monetary or whatever, to get businesses who want to come here to be able to build the facility that they need? So those are my three takeaways.
I would say not, to the last point, not necessarily businesses that want to build, but developers that want to build speculatively to accommodate the growth of our existing industry base, as opposed to businesses that want, there's land available for businesses to want to come in, come in and build. And if they're looking at constructing a new facility, regardless of where they're looking at constructing a new facility, they're anticipating the timeline associated with constructing a new facility. If you have a local aerospace supplier that has suddenly gotten a contract with NASA and has to double their employment within the next six months, then we don't have any place for them to grow into. That's what we're trying to address and that's what we would hope to address. And I can tell you from conversations that I've had with developers so far, that your traditional economic development incentives, like development fee rebates and, and tax rebates and things like that, of no interest to them. Time is what's of interest to them. And so I think anything in the code that helps to address the development review timeline piece, which I believe there are things, I haven't gotten through the whole thing yet, but I believe there are components of that that will help address that, both from the housing development and the commercial development, commercial and industrial development side.
Okay. And I do understand, I just think of developers as businessmen.
Yeah, sure.
So when I said businesses, it was a whole slew. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and then start our meeting.[884.67]
All right, let's go ahead and get going again. Don't know about the rest of y'all, but I got potato chips, so now I'm happy. Outside, yeah. All right, I will share begrudgingly, Dr. Waters. I'll give you one, a little small broken one. Yeah, they won't come back. I did offer before I went out there, I would, my treat. All right, let's go ahead and move on to first call, public invited to be heard. Jeff Cahoon, AFL-CIO, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bagley, members of the council. My name is Jeff Cahoon. I reside in Boulder County over in Boulder, and I've had the honor of meeting and talking with many of you. I am the president of the Boulder Area Labor Council. We represent AFL-CIO unions and also the teachers' unions, a member of our council. And we have a six-county area, Boulder, Broomfield, Clear Creek, Gilpin, Summit, and Lake Counties. You might think of the old Hard Rock and coal mining districts. I come before you really tonight to speak about two issues. One is you are in a process now of reexamining your marijuana licensing provisions. And I know dealing with some land use issues. One area that I have not heard being addressed, and that I want to draw to your attention, is the area of workforce protections and merit-based licensing approach. This is an approach that's being used increasingly commonly. Basically putting some workforce issues in addition to land use, license, other regulatory affairs. Specifically, how are they treating their employees? Do they have health insurance, for example? Do they have the right to collective bargaining? Is the employer willing to be neutral in an industry that is rapidly growing? I know our standard picture is, hey, these are nice little mom-and-pop businesses. Nah, not anymore. Increasingly, marijuana industry is the subject of hedge fund ownership. I think we recognize that money is to be made in this industry. And one of the ways that we feel very importantly that we should work on is to make sure that the workforce is well-paid, well-compensated, well-protected. So that's an issue I'd like to bring forward to the council. Secondly, in my conversations with some council members, increasingly we realize that perhaps Longmont does not have the most progressive regulations on the book in terms of city contracting, fair wage provisions, and those type of items. So we would urge you to open a conversation with us on that issue. We're happy to provide expertise in both of these issues. We have good attorneys, we have good, solid expertise in both these areas, and we'd be happy to work with council on that. With that, thank you for your time tonight. We're just basically introducing the subject, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
At this time, we don't do, we can't answer, we can't ask you questions. We're just here to listen for now, but grab us at any time. He backed me up against the vending machine.
There you go.
Very effective. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, Doug Ward.
Mayor Bagley, council members Doug Ward, 2337 Brende Court. For the past three years, I've had the opportunity to kind of be immersed and to observe this supporting action for mental health that's going on in the city. And I just had a couple of observations about it as I was thinking about things going on in the city. I follow some of the issues that come forward to council, like housing, like the cost of housing and homelessness and that kind of thing. And they're always founded in economic kind of considerations. Where do we find the money to do this? How do we incent builders to build facilities that are affordable and that kind of thing? So there's always this foundation of a question of economics. And as we think about mental health issues, there's certainly with mental health, there are certainly economic considerations about it. There's never enough counselors available, there's not enough programs, money for programs available. But the thing that, a message that I've heard again and again as we participated in these discussions is how important it is that people are surrounded by family, friends, work associates who are sensitive, who have the courage to speak out, and who know what to say and what to do. And there have been so many instances in these discussions over the last three years where I have heard people say, this has been, as Councilman Martin ported out, this has been so important because I feel like I have the tools and I feel like I have the courage to approach somebody that I'm concerned about and know how to say something that's helpful and not destructive. Or I've heard people say, you know, as important as the medications were to me or as important as the counseling was, day in and day out, I'm associated with family and friends and associates, and the real strength of my recovery came from having people who were sensitive, courageous, and knew what to say. And so when you think about our community, you heard Julie's statistics, 20% of us will have clinical issues, mental health issues, in any given year, which means our quality of our life or our ability to work will be impacted. In Longmont, that's 18,000 people, 18,000 people. And we have the capacity as a community to make their lives better without spending a dime. So I'm so proud to be able to see what this community has done and to be associated with what Sam is doing to the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Gordon Pedro. Would like an update on Boise before you begin.
Great visit. Mayor and council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. I'm here to speak about item 11A, open space acquisitions. I want to say that I'm enthusiastically supportive of this item before you, and I hope that you adopt it tonight. Number of residents have indicated that acquisitions is one of their top priorities of our open space program. The Harper, Newby, and Double Six Ranch properties are all key, and they have willing sellers. And they meet several of the purposes for which all of your residents voted for the open space tax ballot. They preserve agriculture on visual quarters, conserve agricultural lands, linkages and trails, and urban shaping buffers. I've spoken to many people in the last few days about this matter before you, and I've found nobody that's not enthusiastically supportive of acquiring these properties if you can. So option number one, to direct staff to move forward, is the right one. I would like to hopefully hear or see an additional direction to staff, and that would be to develop options to ensure resources are available for future key opportunities that come about. As we all know, having the right combination of key parcels that are appropriate to purchase with open space funds, a willing seller, they don't come around every day, and they don't stay on the market very long. So we need to be in position to take advantage when they come available in the future. As everybody knows, various aspects of the open space program add greatly to our quality of life in this community. So thank you very much for considering this, and I hope you direct staff to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Karen Dyke.
Mr. Mayor and council members. Karen Dyke, 708 Hayden Court. Three separate topics tonight. First of all, Earth Day, the Sustainable Resilient Longmont Earth Day event, was very much a success. We had over 900 people there, and so thank you to everybody who came and spoke, several of you did. And it, yeah, we were really crowded there at the museum, so it was very successful, thank you. The next item, next up for us, we're going to have a renewable energy fair, May 19th, from noon to 4:00 PM at Roosevelt Park. We're going to have music and food. We call it kind of a hoedown and a teach-in. We're also going to have speakers, and so we're going to interrupt the music with different speakers talking about how we can move forward to renewable energy. So we're looking forward to seeing you guys there. And this is your official invitation, we'll be getting out more marketing later. I also wanted to comment on the open space acquisition, and I am in favor of it, but I am somewhat concerned about the Newby acquisition. I'm kind of that geek that goes out and drives around to look at the open space, and I note that there is a rather large fracking complex being built on the Newby land out there. And I'm concerned about the liability, and to think about that as we move forward, if there are major spills in that area. Because the severance taxes that they're collecting to cover abandoned wells and any pollution that might occur at sites is not going to be able to come from the state because they just aren't collecting large enough severance taxes, and that fund is basically broke. They're having trouble paying the costs for the COGCC members right now. So I looked up, and in Weld County, there were 360 barrels spilled in the last two weeks, and they only have to report five barrels or more. And that was in two weeks in Weld County, and that's only those that they self-report. And that's over 11,000 gallons, is how many gallons that would be for those barrels. So it can be a considerable amount spilled, and always concerned about the pollution that might come from fracking, so just a consideration. Thank you very much. I am in favor, though, of the acquisition.
Thank you, Ms. Dyke. Ron Stewart.
Ron Stewart, 814 Half measures Drive, mayor and members of the council. I'm also here to support or encourage you to support proceeding with the purchase of the three open space parcels that you have on your agenda later on. I think they're really important parcels. To me, the most important thing about them is that they're urban shaping parcels. They're parcels that literally become the buffer, or an expanded buffer, between us and our neighbors to the east. And I think it's very important that we be doing that with these parcels, but also I'm here to encourage you to look at supporting as a priority the purchase of additional open space as time goes on. It's kind of no secret to any of us that we're experiencing rapid growth in this area, kind of unprecedented growth in the area to the east of Longmont. We don't have a lot of time in my mind to be out there getting the land that we want to have as open space. We have limited times to secure priority parcels, and I think we need to have a priority here in Longmont to do as much as we can to purchase open space in the near term. My experience with open space acquisition is that it's very opportunistic. You have a chance to buy it when you have a willing seller and when you're the willing buyer. And to the extent that you have willing sellers out there, as you do in the case of these three properties, or in the case of others that may be your priorities, you need to be on top of it and after them while they're available, because if you're not, they're going to get developed. They're going to go the way of much of what is happening east of us and all around us right now. I think it's a critical time in Longmont, a critical time in Colorado, for us to be defining what the future is going to look like. So I encourage you to support what you've got tonight, but also to realize that there's a bigger apple out there to get. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Joyce Castillo.
Mayor Bagley and council members, my name is Joyce Costello, 3324 Camden Drive. I'm here to support the open acquisition of the open space measures, and I'll be very short. And my one major concern, I'd like to see that our community has that green belt around it to separate it from adjoining communities. That is super important, because there are so many places in the West where you drive, where you just go from one community to the next one, and you never knew you changed, drove to another area, because they just all in sprawl, just sprawl that way. So I'm very much in favor of acquisition of this land and continued acquisitions of green belt around Longmont. Thank you.
Strider Benston, thank you, Mrs. Costello.
Greetings, Mayor Bagley, council. I'm Strider Benston, 951 West 17th. I just spoke with Ron, who remembered, remember our former commissioner, Ben Pearlman? One of the best speeches I ever heard him make, and one of the best here, was if you fly over the county at night, you can tell where the cities are. Anywhere else is just a morass and a mess. And here, it's like, oh, yeah, we got open space. There's something in between the lights that matters. I heard possibly the best discussion about development related to what Longmont, the community, is about that I have perhaps ever heard in my 10 or 12 years here, although sometimes I leave early and don't listen to everything, so there could be others. But I'm really impressed with the dialogue and what seems to be taking place on that. Ms. Fung made a wonderful presentation, I am thrilled with that. And the mental health thing, that sounds terrific. I've dealt with a lot of crises in my life in the last 74 years, and some of them I have survived. But I think it's really crucial to have that kind of network that is perhaps beginning to be built on a deeper level. And, gosh, so many other things. Labor, people don't know, one of my lifetimes in Chicago for a decade, two decades, I was rank-and-file labor organizer, so I've dealt with a lot of pieces of that. So, anyway, back on the danger thing, we got a war cabinet who is planning to start a war. And if you love the Korean War and the Vietnam War and that Iraq and Afghanistan war, you're really going to love a war against Iran. And on the other thing, I did get my electricity back on, thanks to the hour center, and I did get, the Department of Motor Vehicles apologized to me for screwing up my records and putting me in jeopardy with the county. And I, they waived the reinstatement fee because it was their fault, which they said, and maybe I can go to county court and get the whole thing dropped. But life has been severe, and it continues to be so, but it's better right now than it was a week ago. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Benston. All right, Valerie, could we move on? And could you please read the consent agenda and the introduction, and reading their titles?
Item 8A is ordinance 201820, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Firehouse to the Art Studio, Inc. Public hearing in second reading is scheduled for May 8th. Item 8B is ordinance 201821, a bill for an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement concerning adequate school capacity between the city of Longmont and the St. Brain Valley School District RE1J. Public hearing in second reading is scheduled for May 8th. Item 8C is resolution 201850, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Circles program. Item 8D is resolution 201851 concerning the issuance of a tax-exempt skilled nursing facility revenue bond by the county of Boulder, Colorado, for the Catherine and Charles Hoover Greenhouse Neighborhood Homes Corporation. Item 8E is approved three capital improvement program amendments, and staff does not need to pull any of these items.
If they're, Mayor Protem Christensen.
I would like to pull item B for a brief discussion.
I'm sorry, I would like to pull item B for a brief discussion.
All right, are there any other motions to be pulled? If not, do I have a motion? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, I move passage of the consent agenda, minus B.
Do I have a second? Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Mayor Protem Christensen, the four jurors. Actually, we're going to go into second, let's come back, all right. All right, ordinance is on second reading, 9A, ordinance 201816, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities to the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018. We don't have a staff report, do we? No? All right, are there any questions from council? Seeing none, let's open this up for public hearing. And seeing that nobody wants to speak, let's close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Mayor Protem Christensen.
I move that we pass zero, ordinance 201816.
Do I have a second? Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. The second item is ordinance 2018-17, a bill for the ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H-28A to Jeffrey W. Seawall and Leslie Kaprowski. Is there a staff report? I'm assuming not. Are there any questions from council? Mayor Protem Christensen.
I would like to know what their business is or what their airport use is.
It's just a regular little hangar, isn't it?
It is a regular hangar, but if you'll give me a few moments, I can find that, if we can come back to that.
All right.
My apologies, I thought our airport manager was behind me.
That's all right, let's move on to ordinance 2018-18 then. A bill for an ordinance authorizing a first amendment to the lease between the city of Longmont as Lee C. and the Archdiocese of Denver as Lessor for use of the St. John the Baptist Church parking lot for Longmont City employee parking. I'm assuming there's no staff report. Are there any questions from council? Mayor Protem Christensen.
Sorry, so I was, I guess I knew this was coming, but I, we're actually going to close down the parking downstairs for 18 months? Is that right?
Correct, that's part of the foundation program, the foundation issue that we talked to you all about a while back. We're actually going to have a presentation next week on that project and what it's going to entail.
Can we park in the parking lot?
We're actually going to look at alternate parking for the council.
Okay.
It's probably going to, I'm looking at Barb, it's probably going to be in the parking area. If you go down, there's, no, the one to the left as you're coming down the ramp before you go in. That looks like it's, that's going to be the location for council meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so I get to be mayor and I get a special parking spot for like four months. Gone, gone. It's the only perk. All right, the, all right, so if there's no further question, Dr. Waters, I apologize. Well, you're complaining about that. I may be the only council member whose entire tenure on this council is in alternative parking someplace. I just want you to know that. All right, so Dr. Waters is in a worse position than me. All right, is there any, let's go ahead and open this for public hearing. Anybody want to talk on ordinance 2018-18? All right, seeing nobody, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, I move passage of ordinance 2018-18.
Let's vote. That passes unanimously. All right, ordinance 2018-19, a bill for an ordinance approving an economic incentive agreement with Creative Learning Systems LLC. Is there a staff report? Nope, all right, any questions from council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public, or open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, I move passage of ordinance 02018-19.
All right, let's vote. Oh, yes, I want to vote. And that passes unanimously. All right.
Hangar.
Hangar, you got it? All right.
Mayor, Mayor Bagley, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Christensen. Mayor Bagley, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Christensen. This is a pretty routine transaction. What happened was the, the hangar was sold to a different owner. So we just really need to change the information. I mean, in terms of the contact, who's actually leasing it. So it's the exact same use, but it's being, it's going to a different user.
All right. So let's revisit ordinance 2018 seventeen. I've already read it in. If there's no further questions from council, let's go ahead and open this to a public hearing. Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Mayor Protem?
I move passage of 2018 seventeen. Yes.
All right. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. We're on a roll. All right. Let's go back. And now, the floor is yours, Mayor Protem. Let's go back and revisit that item we've pulled from the consent agenda.
All right. Now we're grinding to a halt. No, not really. When we, when we talked about the Renaissance development over to the west of town, we were given a, the, the capacity of one hundred and twenty-five percent is supposed to be based on it not exceeding one hundred and twenty-five percent of capacity based on, over a five-year period. Yet, when we got that report, and when we get every report, it includes the first year. So it's really only a report of four years. So the capacity could be at one hundred and twenty-five percent in four years rather than five. Furthermore, when we, that's, that would be if the buildings or property were already developed and built. But actually, it's usually a year after that. So in reality, the, the numbers that we are getting are for three years in the future, not five years in the future. And I think that's a real problem, because then we wind up having to say, oh, gosh, now it's only been three years and we're at one hundred and twenty-five percent capacity, and we need to do something about it. So I do think it would be helpful to at least have them make it five years in the future from not the current, not including the current, the year that you are talking about, the existing year, but the next year, so that it's at least five years in the future instead of four, or really three, for a capacity of the school.
Do I hear a motion?
What does anybody, does anybody not get that? Apparently, nobody gets.
Councilmember Martin.
I have a question for Councilmember Christensen, Mayor Protem Christensen. So I actually do understand your objection, but I don't understand what you are suggesting that we do about it.
Oops.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem.
I'm suggesting.
I'm suggesting that we amend this slightly so that it makes it clear that what we're asking for is five years in the future, and that it not, when they're making their estimate, that it not include the current year, which is already gone by the time we get the estimate. So in other words, it would be one year, it would be starting with the time in which the development is already built. Five years from the time that the development is built, that the school capacity for a development should not be at one hundred and twenty-five percent within the five years of the time that the development is built, which seems a much, much better way for parents to understand whether they really want to move into a development they'll build that will be at capacity within three years of the time they move in.
Are you, are you talking about?
I'm talking about how they.
The building permits issued and certificates of occupancy issued by the address in the city's five-year estimate?
Yeah.
Do you look at one point, two point three D? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the school, the, the school district creates their estimate of when it will be at capacity. And what they give us is really three years in the future, not five years in the future. It is the school.
I guess what I'm asking, can you show, is there something, other, the only, I don't know, the only, I mean, we agree to give them a five-year estimate so they can plan on page sixty-six.
But they create. They create that estimate, not us.
Right, right. No, we provide them that estimate. The city, the city will provide the school district with information on growth and development trends within the jurisdiction. So we provide them estimates for building permits on the next five years. And then they use that.
It was my understanding that the school district provides that.
Can we?
Right. So we, that's what I'm saying. So I guess, that's what I, so I guess what I'm trying to understand. So what I'm saying is that, so on page sixty-six, we give them info. And then what are you asking back? Where are?
Well, what they give us is when, what they think it will exceed one hundred and twenty-five percent. But they base it on the current year. In other words, the year in which somebody applies for something. For instance, the Renaissance, I think that was in September or something. So they included that current year, and then they included four years in the future. But the development hadn't even been built.
I guess I'm gonna turn to you, but I don't read it that way. But go ahead.
Mayor Bagley, Mayor Protem Christensen, Aaron Fostick, Planning and Development Services. So there's a couple of things going on and a couple five-year references in the IGA. So the city does do an estimate of building permits every year to help with our budget process.
Right.
And we do provide that information to the school district to assist them in their projections. And so we do that on a five-year basis, but we also include a projection for the current year. So when I, when I do that for the next five-year CIP, I'll also include a projection for this year. The district also submits to us a district facility plan, which shows, and that's what's in section two point one. They submit that annually, and that gives us information on their projected student populations, as well as planned projects and things of that nature. You might remember that when we came back to you a couple weeks ago, they also have an annual report, which details the expenditures that they spend within our feeder system. What you're referring to is really the result of what we get through our development referral process, which is also referenced in the IGAs we've been talking about with the district. They do look at phasing information with projects as available.
Right.
And the district has a pretty, what I would call sophisticated method for doing student projections. And so they have, Scott talked about this a little bit last time, but they have a cohort model where they take, you know, kids at birth and age them up through kindergarten and then grow that class size. And so there's a number of factors that go into their projections. But when they get, when we get information on a development proposal, it is really looking at when the development is, I mean, it looks at the capacity that's available today, but they also look at when that development's expected to come online and look at other planned school projects. So in the example that you were referencing with the apartments on Clover Basin.
Right.
There was a potential capacity issue at those schools, but there was also planned capacity improvements, which were a result of the bond. So additions have been made at both Blue Mountain and Eagle Crest. I think that, that wasn't my project, but I think that school may have been in Blue Mountain's attendance area. And so those capacity issues then don't exist because additional capacity was created. But we can certainly ask them to provide, the IGA doesn't really specify the format that they have to provide referral information on. It just talks about the capacity. I will say that we, we mentioned that the district has a long-range facilities planning commission that meets at least quarterly, and that's a, a group that the city has representation on. We review enrollment projections every time we meet to kind of monitor capacity. And so that's something that we're actively looking at to say, okay, you know, these, these feeders may be getting up in terms of their enrollment, particularly once we've done the October, once the district's done the October counts to look at, you know, this, if it has one hundred and twenty-four percent capacity, then we can take a look from a planning perspective and say, okay, within this feeder area, we know that these developments are gonna be submitting for some type of development approval, and this could be an issue. Is there something that needs to be done in terms of looking at adjusting attendance area boundaries, or is there a planned school project? So although that's not all specified in the IGA, that's part of our continued coordination with the district and something that we're constantly monitoring. I don't see that we couldn't ask them to look at how they're providing their referral information, if that would be more helpful to council. But I don't know that that's something we'd need to change in the language of the IGA, if you were comfortable with that.
Okay. I, I understand if it isn't really part of the, the IGA agreement, that's a pretty specific little thing. But I do think that, that the, the additional capacity was only created with the bond after that development came in, and it was necessary because it was going to be over capacity. And it was gonna be over capacity in the very next year. And so I, I think it would be much more helpful if they would do their projections based on, if they want to do it over six years, then that's fine. But it needs to be a little bit longer, because there, I believe that misleads parents and the community into what actually is going on with the school capacity. Thank you.
Scott, I'll just mention that Scott will be here on second reading, and so I can mention this to him and have him talk a little bit more about what they do, if that would be helpful for you.
I think also, if we go back to that conversation, one of the other factors that plays in is the open enrollment piece. And I believe that when those two schools started approaching it, they actually stopped the open enrollment, because that's another impact on capacity that comes into play. So I think what I've seen is one of the first things they look at is open enrollment. And then they start looking at those other pieces. But they can go in more detail next, on second reading.
I guess the other thing, I mean, just rereading it here, we give them, we give them the five-year projection. Right? Then they, what they specifically says here is that we then tell the school district, and they get a chance to weigh in. But they're, right now, there, it says, in reviewing whether there is sufficient school capacity to accommodate a proposed development, the school district will consider whether the attendance area in which the proposed development is situated has available school capacity based on the formula above. And that formula, I mean, it's a word that I kind of look at as their business, they're experts in it, and they'd let us know if, if we, if, if we're bringing in a development, the whole point of this is they're gonna let us know, we're the experts, you don't have enough school seating. And so, I mean, I don't know if Dr. Waters, I mean, this is kind of your expertise.
Well, it's been a while since, since I've done school planning, but I will say, school capacity is not a fixed number. Changes in curriculums, student teacher ratio, scheduling during the school day, what to do with summers, all affect school capacity. So when you talk about, you know, you were talking about numbers for projection purposes, within a context of a, whether it's one year, two year, three years, four years, five years, there's a range of decisions that are gonna be made in the, in the, in the context of the school district, based on all of the, based on their contracts with teachers and, and curriculum decisions that are gonna end up impacting what the real capacity is in a school. This is, you know, whether it's three to five years, honestly, it is their business. What we're trying to do is give them the data they need to make good decisions, right, about, about what to do with facilities. And then whatever, whatever other decisions they're gonna make about personnel, curriculum, et cetera, scheduling is gonna be obviously on their agenda.
Thanks, Dr. Waters. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just a quick question that this whole discussion brought to mind. Has the city ever denied a development application or put it on hold based upon school capacity?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, I'll answer this anecdotally, but I can gather data. Before the previous bond and mill levy override were passed in two, it was before your time, so, two thousand seven or eight.
Yeah, right.
There was probably, I'd say in two thousand six, maybe, particularly on the east side of town, and I think on the southwest, in the southwest part of town, there were some capacity issues. One result was a project that went from not being age restricted to age restricted. And another was, there was a few projects, if I remember correctly, and again, this is reaching back into the memory, there were some projects that were sort of on hold until, until that bond passed, and additional capacity was more than just a plan.
Okay.
There was, in the southwest part of town, before this bond passed, a development, I think, that had to look at how they phased. They were like a couple lots shy of having enough capacity, and so they had to look at doing a couple phases of plating so that they wouldn't hit that capacity standard. And so the short answer to a question is yes, but kind of with a caveat. And I wouldn't say a full-on denial.
Okay.
But some adjustments.
And the reason I ask was just out of curiosity, to see if this IGA really works. You know, are we really working with the school district to plan the community? And, and you answered that.
I would say yes.
Thank you.
Ryan would say, he's the guy that always shows up and gives us the numbers. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Waters?
I'll move approval of, I need to go back to the number.
B.
Of, B. I'll move approval of B.
Which is two thousand eighteen dash twenty-one.
We go back up to that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Let's move on to our last item of business. Is there a report regarding the open space acquisitions? This'll be cool. Not to get ahead of myself, but.
Mayor, council members, David Bell, Natural Resources Manager for the city of Longmont. I really came down here tonight to kind of sell the open space acquisition program, but the members of the public kind of stole my thunder on that tonight. Dan Wolfer will be doing the presentation. I just want to say, though, that I think doing this for twenty years, I think grand openings of parks and acquisitions are some of the most exciting things that decision makers get to do. We also want to make sure that you're aware that we know that when you are looking at new shiny things, they never come without blemishes. We want to make sure that you get all that information as well. So Dan will do the presentation. I will be here, as, as will he and some others, to help answer questions if you have those. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Bell. You're up.
Mayor, council members, Dan Wolfer, and program administrator.
Get up, yeah, get up to that mic. The paper's having a hard time hearing you.
Get up to that mic. So, happy to be here. These are good times, especially when you have the support of your community that speak towards our program. So with the open space acquisition tonight, a couple agenda things that brief history and perspective of the open space program, followed by, you know, discussion about these three open space properties. The Harper property, the Double Six Ranch LLC, as well as the Newby Farm LLC. And we'll follow up by showing you, we know that matrix these days are very important. So we got that matrix in there that hopefully that addresses some of those kind of things. Followed by some of our survey results that show the support from the community. We've just, we're in the process of wrapping up the open space master plan update, and we've got some of those results from the survey. And then we'll follow up with any questions that you might have in looking for further direction. So with this, the open space program, in November of two thousand, the citizens of Longmont approved two-tenths of a percent for sales use tax. It was intended to be a twenty-year tax for the acquisition improvements and the maintenance of open space property. So with the initial issuance of bonds of twenty-two million dollars, with the understanding that would, over time, repay that forty million dollars. However, we rocked through that money really pretty quick. And it was in two thousand seven when we went back to the, the general public and said, you know, we have higher priorities, and we've got more property that we would like to acquire. And so in two thousand seven, we extended the open space sales tax from twenty twenty to twenty thirty-four. And it allowed us to generate an additional thirty-one million dollars. So, and then you could see there what the, the, not to exceed and what the proceeds were. So it was in two thousand seven that we issued those first bonds of fifteen point five million dollars, leaving the balance similar. similar. So overall, since 2000, the city's acquired a little over 1,600 acres in fee, 1,200 acres in conservation easements, totaling 2,800 acres strictly in, you know, open space. If you look at the other properties that my work group manages, including our nature areas and Button Rock Preserve, we're well over 4,000 acres. So specifically with the open space expenditures, we've spent about $28 million in land acquisitions over time. So these are our open space land acquisitions that we'd like to talk to you about. Again, the three of them in total is 343.9 acres, 20 in conservation easement, the balance in fee, which we would, based on the letters of intent, approximately $11.5 million. With that, we would need to do some additional bonding. And as you see, this 343 acres is about a 12% increase. So this is again, a good time for us. It's exciting to see willing sellers coming to us. As Ron Stewart had mentioned, here's an opportunity for us and we want to take advantage of that. So those acquisitions then will require what we would need is the additional $8.3 million in bonding. So the Harper acquisition, as you see up in that upper right-hand corner and State Highway 66 and Weld County Road 1, this is 20.32 acres. The total cost of that would be $720,000. We're working with Boulder County as a partner on this one. So we'll pick up 2/3 of that, Boulder County's going to pick up a third. The nice thing about this and the exciting aspect is that's, you know, the gateway, the entryway into Longmont. Not only do you have that as the gateway, but we're right across the street from future community park. So that's the Harper acquisition. And again, these are the open space criterias that that particular parcel meets. It's the agricultural preservation. We talked a little bit and you heard about the urban shaping, the preservation of the visual corridors as well as the conservation of the natural resources. The second property is the Double Six Ranch. You see it highlighted there in the middle of the map. Again, approximately 70 acres. This will be in, would continue to be in agriculture lease. The current tenant is also our tenant on the Hartman Open Space property, as well as the Hearn or Open Space property and a number of other agricultural properties in the area. Again, the open space criteria that this acquisition fulfills, again, is the agricultural component, urban shaping, preservation of the visual corridors, as well as the conservation of our resources. Finally, the third piece is the Newby Farm LLC acquisition. Little bit larger than the other two, 253 acres, $800, or $8 million approximately. And you can see here the close proximity from our existing open space, as well as the connection to St. Frain State Park. So with that, all the same criteria, but now we add the potential for linkage in trail corridors for a regional trail connection from what we're trying to do around Union Reservoir, which then ties into Spring Gulch, which ties into the St. Frain Greenway, which then ties into the Colorado Front Range Trail. See where I'm going with that one. So here's our matrix with the acreage, the total cost. With that, we've acquired the historic water rights on all three of these properties, the criteria associated that they meet. And then I wanted to share with you, as I said earlier in the presentation, some of the comments that came back from the open space response. The respondents to the scientific random sampling gave the value of open space, our natural areas and trails, very important to them, a 4.65 out of 5. 51% identified the need for more resources for open space acquisition when we look at the future growth of our community. 74% responded that they would be more than willing to support extensions or renewal of the open space sales tax. And then again, this kind of shows where they, if you had the piece of the pie, where they'd like that to be. 40% being to maintaining what we have, 32% for further land acquisitions, and then 29% in the development of amenities, including trails. So with that, I'm going to leave it to you for questions. Happy to address any questions you might have. And then we look for, from you, for direction regarding the land negotiations allowing us to move forward to negotiate these, with these three landowners, as well as directions for the issuance for the additional debt to cover those costs.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So Dan, do these three land acquisitions come with conservation easements? Or do we need to look at conservation easements? And the second question probably will answer that, is what's the difference between a conservation easement and a fee?
Mayor Bagley, Councilwoman Peck. The difference between the conservation easement is basically we are acquiring the development rights.
Right.
So that's all we're doing. Those landowners maintain the management of those properties. We are just purchasing that development right from them and extinguishing that. And the fee, like the Newby property, we will own that all and we will manage it. So previous councils have directed us, anything that we're going to buy in fee, that they would like us to pursue a conservation easement to another entity. I suspect if we were going to move in this direction, we would use the Boulder County Conservation District, as we've done before with the other agricultural properties. There's no real need to do that on the Harper property because Boulder County will already be purchasing that conservation easement along with us.
Okay. And my second question was about the well on the Newby property. How do we deal with that? Or have we even looked at that yet? If we haven't acquired it?
Mayor Bagley, councilmembers, we've definitely looked at it. We know what's going on. We're, we've been out there, we're monitoring it. That's the development that's gone on. It was even prior to the letter of intent with Currie McGee and Anna Darko doing the development on that site. That's all going to be part of the negotiations. It would be our intent that we have some kind of clause that once we proceed and move in that direction, there will be no further development of the oil and gas developments. I suspect like many of the other oil and gas wells that we have on open space, we'll likely do a variety of monitoring, air and water quality monitoring programs that we do on an annual basis to make certain that at least we know what's going on from the movement and anything that might happen from that perspective. I think historically, we've got a pretty good working relationship with Anna Darko and Currie McGee and I suspect we'll continue to maintain that relationship.
Harold?
So if you remember the testing procedures that Jason talked about a while back at one of the council presentations, it gives us the ability to put those same measures in place on our property to monitor that area. So that's the ongoing monitoring that we talked about, that we're doing with some of the plugged-in abandoned wells that we have in our community.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Do we know, what do we know about the nature of those wells? So how old are they? How far through their productive, expected productive life are they? And are they vertical wells or are they directional drills or horizontal drills? And if so, where do they go?
Mayor and councilmember, we believe, based on the technology and they're still in the process of developing those wells. I see Dale sneaking up behind me, probably with more detail. I suspect that they will be doing those as horizontal wells and the older vertical wells are anticipated to be plugged and abandoned, but I'll let Dale fill you in on that.
But Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, Dan's correct. So some of the wells, if you've driven out, and I would encourage council, please go look at all these properties along with us and tell us what you see. Specifically with Newby though, if you go out there right now, the barriers are still up there, the sound barriers are there, so you can very clearly see where that is. Those are wells that have just been completed. They are horizontal wells. They're in a north-south orientation. They're going north, potentially all the way to Highway 66. So they will be there for quite some time. Also on the property, more in the center of the Newby property are a series of directional wells that were drilled five to 10 years ago. Anna Darko has been plugging and abandoning several of those, if not all of them. I don't know if all of them have been plugged and abandoned, but that typically is what happens when horizontal drilling comes into those same formations. Typically, an operator needs to plug and abandon the existing, whether they be vertical or directional wells. And so I believe, not unlike most properties in Weld County, that is part of the blemish that David says comes with things. I believe from an open space perspective, however, going long, thinking long-term is the best approach for Longmont. Because not only oil and gas development, the property's susceptible to that, it's also susceptible to future residential development from communities to the east. And so it is weighing those and understanding that it's not a pristine mountain pasture, but it certainly is excellent farmland, will remain that way, and does create a significant buffer between us. And it also, if you rely, look to those maps, it provides us with a direct connection to St. Frain State Park, which I think our citizens would really enjoy that connection.
I was just going to throw my two cents in, which is, this is something that especially the ranch up on Highway 66, my entire time on council, we've been salivating over that one. And then plus the Newby property that links the entire trail system. I read the packet and was like, I was ecstatic, you know, to see this. And right now, even though there's oil and gas going on, if we don't make the acquisition, nothing will change. Meaning the oil and gas operations will continue and we have no voice. Whereas if we buy this property, even if they ignore us and we have no voice, I mean, we will have some voice, whether they listen, but even if they ignore us, we have the opportunity to, you know, continue building that open space moat to the east, which was neglected for years. You know, when I was Ward 1 representative, that was my big concern, that we had, you know, all this beautiful open space to the west and the south and the north and the east was vacant, or the opposite of vacant, open, open to not being open. Yeah, so I think, I think this is a phenomenal opportunity and we would be remiss not to just jump all over it. And I've got some thoughts on, plus the prices are, what I'm seeing is pretty good. So, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, first of all, let me clarify, I was not for a second thinking that the wells would stop us from acquiring this land. I just want to, you know, be going into it with our eyes open. I understand that we can, we will be able to install monitoring equipment. If we find that there are undue levels of emissions leakage, et cetera, do we have any control over what, you know, mitigating procedures the oil, the developer is responsible for making?
You know, Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, as we have found out over the years of doing that, is that by being the watchdog, if you will, we certainly have an influence because we are providing scientific information, verified monitoring data to the state, which we have found that they actually appreciate, a good partner that's out there doing it the right way and providing that data. And we have found them to be willing to take action, maybe albeit not exactly the way we would want it to be, or maybe on the timing, but nonetheless, taking action according to their rules and regulations. And so I do believe we have an impact, certainly with the work that we're doing.
Councilmember Waters?
Carrying on in the tradition of my predecessor in Ward 1, I favor these acquisitions, I want you to know that. And I favor the additional, the sale of the additional revenue bonds to finance the acquisitions. And I think we ought to be as aggressive as we need to be. I mean, we've got some capacity that we're not going to use, given what we've heard and I would concur that we ought to be ready to move when the opportunities present themselves. I do have two questions about the Newby property. I love the idea that it connects with St. Frain State Park, but the trail development's going to go right past the wells we're talking about, isn't it? I mean, aren't they?
Correct. They'll be in proximity, but they, they won't, I don't know the total feet, but my guess is it'll be upwards of 500 feet. We won't be.
So there, so you can do that with sufficient distance to not.
We could do other buffering, we do different things to address that, but you're correct. I mean, it's.
Well, that would be one, just, you know, like one, a little bit of a red flag. Here's the other, relative to trails. That's appealing to that property for the purpose of connecting with the park. But relative to trails more generally, it's my understanding we do use, we have been using open space, money from the open space fund to do trail development, in some cases, between neighborhoods and parks and schools and those kinds of things. And if that's true, it would seem to me that that ought to be money that we would, we would be, wherever our money's going to come from for our capital improvement plans, like the general fund, and keep open space funds dedicated to that kind of trail development as opposed to some of the more, some of the trails between neighborhoods and schools. Not that those aren't important, I just would rather see those not funded with open space money, personally.
And certainly, Councilmember Waters, when we come forward with the CIP this year, which we do every year, that's certainly council's opportunity to give us that direction. What I'll say is that historically, we have typically used the open space to do extensions of things like the St. Frain Greenway. But it is true, we have also used them in order to complete the funding on some of these other critical trails within the city that, you know, our citizens are also looking for. And so it is a balancing a little bit.
So I just would say, when that time comes, that we at least could talk about which of those, in the CIP, are we using open space money for trail development that might have been funded other ways, that's all. But I like what we're doing.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just wanted to throw in, I guess, my thoughts on the issue and concept specifically, that most of these properties are obviously a little bit more towards the northern section, more adjacent to Meade specifically, and that Meade plans to build, I guess, upwards of 1,200 residential units in the next year. And so this seems to be a pertinent concept to visit now before, considering that we may not do flagpole annexations, but some of our eastern neighbors are a little bit more amenable to those things, that we get this within our sphere of influence, if you will. And so I will be in support.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Are we ready for a motion?
Would you like to make a motion?
I would.
Ooh.
I would like, I move that we direct staff to move forward with contract negotiations and debt financing to fund some or all of these properties.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. Go shopping.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Final call, public invited to be heard. Anybody want to say anything? All right, seeing none. Mayor and council comments. Seeing none, do we have any city manager remarks?
Mayor, council, I just wanted to remind you that this Thursday, we have the joint meeting with Boulder City Council. 6:00 PM, they wanted a more of a social hour and then the 7:00 PM, the meeting starts. And that will be at Pinocchio's, correct?
So, what time?
Five? Six is the social time and then seven is when the meeting starts.
All right. Yeah, it says 5:30. Can we?
Kim Pratt Boulevard.
All right, so be there at 6:00. Even though it says 5:30, be there at 6:00. And you'll let us know if that's not true.
Yes.
6 o'clock. All right. 6 o'clock, all right. Tell Zand to bring her dancing shoes. On what? Oh, no, they got, we went to DC. We got, we got, we got a lot of good, yeah, we had a lot of good conversations. They want our, they want our power utility, they want our broadband, they want our retail, they want our BRT, they got a lot of stuff, they got a lot of asking.
And just, I know there's a lot of items that were put on that agenda, specifically the one that I think they put on was the broadband conversation. Pardon?
Dr. Waters?
When I didn't, I missed the opportunity to weigh in on items that go on that agenda.
Way in.
And I'm not, well, I'm not, there's way too much on the agenda for what it means, so I'm not suggesting that. But I am suggesting this, and this came up in other conversations we've had along the way. When I looked at, when you look at the cost of debt service, right, for open space or anything else that we're doing, and those occasions when the concept or the question about public banking comes up, and what you could do with dollars that we are currently using, or what it costs, the cost of money, right, to finance open space or anything else with the way we're doing it right now, at some point in time, because I know they're, well, I don't know, I think the Boulder City Council is interested in this as well. Not for this meeting this week, but at some point, even for ourselves, to return to the question of, you know, what are, what are the implications? What's the level of interest? What are the implications for our community, as well as for the city? I think that's a conversation we ought to have, especially as we talk about continuing to finance our priorities through the sale of bonds.
All right, great, thank you. All right, city manager, anything else?
No more comments, mayor, council.
And yet again, please watch. Just observe this beauty. Just watch. This is, you might cry, get a hanky. Hold on, I got my tissue. Go ahead.
No comments, mayor.
Oh, God, that's beautiful. Adjourned.